Alright, good evening everyone. I'd like to call to order a regular board meeting for November twenty-sixth, uh, two thousand and twenty-four for the school district of Mystery Lake at seven o'clock. Um, tonight we have regrets from Chairperson Warner Brown and Trustee Anderson. Treaty acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are signatories of Treaty Five and that we reside on the traditional territory of the Nishisewa- sorry, I pronounced that wrong, Cree Nation. Uh, the school district of Mystery Lake is located in the community of Thompson in the province of Manitoba. Manitoba is located in the, on the traditional and ancestral lands of the, okay, this is challenging. With Yeo Inanu Cree, Dennisuli Dene, Meti Inunit, Inuit, Asenu Ojibic- Ojub- uh, Ajibowey Cree, excuse me, Ashinobi Ajibowey, the Dakota Oite, Dakota Nations, the school district of Mystery Lake remains committed to honoring treaties in the spirit of truth and reconciliation. We are all treaty people. Uh, can I get an approval of the agenda? Uh, Trustee Young, second by Trustee Humby. Any questions? All in favor? Okay, passed. Uh, adoption of the minutes. Can I have a mover? Uh, Trustee, uh, Nicholsaw, seconder. Uh, Trustee, oh, this is tough, first one in a long, long time. Sharker, all in favor? Alright, passed. Uh, tonight we have, uh, three presentations and delegations. First on the agenda is the R.D. Parker Students Offering Support SOS. Take it away.
We're here representing SOS at RDPC. My name's Caitlin and I've been in SOS for three years.
I'm Sarah and I've been SOS for four years.
My name's Dana and I've been in, this is my first year of being in SOS.
Students Offering Support SOS is based out of R.D. Parker Collegiate. We formed over a decade ago as an extension of the Hope North Suicide Prevention Committee. The community-based committee has since disbanded, but the school group is still going strong. We became a Jack.org chapter a few years ago. Jack chapters are groups of young leaders who work year-round to identify and dismantle barriers to positive mental health in their communities. With training and mentorship from Jack.org staff, they organize mental health initiatives that are designated to meet the needs of their peers. There are track chapters in high schools and universities spread across Canada. Some of our current members previously received mental health awareness training from Jack.org. The rest will receive training later this year. A big part of our training includes the Be There certification, a certified program through Jack.org that gives us knowledge and confidence to safely support anyone who may be struggling with mental health. Our goals at RDPC is to promote mental health awareness, reduce stigma surrounding mental health, and to promote a place of belonging and inclusivity.
Three of our projects this year have been the Winter Clothing Drive, the We Scare Hunger Food Drive, and Birthday Box Program. Our winter clothing drive, we saw a request for winter jackets from the MKO Food Bank on their Facebook page and decided to do a clothing drive to help. So we made posters and advertised to the school. We were looking for donations of gently-used winter gear. We gathered over forty jackets, eighty-six hats, twenty sweaters, and additional bags of mitts, scarves, socks, and footwear. On October sixteenth, we donated, we donated everything we received to the MKO Food Bank. And they expressed their gratitude and a thank you was posted on the Manitoba Kiwe Tinoi Okinkay Mac, um, main social media page, which caught the attention of Emily Redhead. Emily Redhead Assistant reached out to us, asked them some clarifying questions, and Emily Redhead shared our success to the members statement during the House sitting of the Legislative Assembly of Manitoba on November seventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
Commander for Thompson.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker. Today, honored to recognize the remarkable contributions of Students Offering Support or SOS. A student-led group of fifteen committed youth from grades nine to twelve at R.D. Parker Collegiate in Thompson. Founded over a decade ago as a student extension of the Hope North Suicide Prevention Network, SOS has continued its mission to promote mental wellness even after Hope North was disbanded. This dedicated group stands as a testament to the power of youth advocacy in mental health, striving to make a difference through empathy and action. They are now connected with Jack.org, a national organization that brings together high school and university advocates to combat mental health stigma and empower youth across Canada. Uh, one of SOS's most notable projects this year was inspired by a social media post from Manitoba Kiwe Kipokumahana. MKO reached out to the community for donations of gently-used winter jackets for their Well Variety Center in Thompson, which provides holistic care for individuals facing addictions, trauma, and homelessness. Understanding that basic needs are foundational to mental wellness, SOS took action, organizing a winter clothes drive within their school. The response was overwhelming, Honorable Speaker. They collected over forty jackets, eighty-six hats, twenty hoodies, and additional bags of mitts, scarves, socks, ski pants, and footwear. Their compassionate response shows their understanding of community and the importance of dignity and warmth for those in need. But SOS's efforts don't stop there. They are also running a food drive to support both the Well Variety Center and the Thompson Seniors Community Resource Council's Food Hamper Program. Additionally, they contribute to a birthday box program that provides party supplies to youth in remote northern communities, ensuring every child has a chance to celebrate. Please join me in commending SOS for their impactful work and dedication to building a compassionate, supportive community in Manitoba, Honorable Speaker.
We are now receiving framed copies of this speech, once Postal Services review. One will be displayed in the R.D. Parker main office and one will be gifted to the school board office. Our We Scare Hunger Food Drive is a yearly campaign. We held a food drive for all of October this year, encouraging students and teachers to participate. R.D. Parker Administration supported our efforts with a donation match during October sixteenth to the eighteenth, and also offered a gift card draw prize during student-led conferences for any households that brought non-perishable food items during the conferences. We also did additional shopping for non-perishable food items. We brainstormed different organizations that might be in need of donations. This year we chose the Well Variety Center and the Thompson Senior Community Resource Council for their food hamper program. This is our second year donating to the seniors and we still have to coordinate with the Well Variety Center for their donation.
Birthday Box Program. One of our staff leads belongs to the Northern Birthday Box Project Group on Facebook. This group's goal is to provide birthday celebration boxes to youth one to seventeen years of age in remote and northern Canada, where costs are high and supplies are limited. We pledged to sponsor five birthday boxes. We received some basic information about five different recipients, and we shopped for their preferred cake mix and frosting flavor, cake candles, and party decorations based on the preferred theme and colors. We also included a handmade birthday card from us and mailed out the packages to their respective destinations. What's next for SOS? We are running the canteen at the community school movie night on December sixth. This is our second year running the canteen, and we would like to thank the district for giving us the opportunity to be involved and for the donation that we are going to apply to future projects. We are about to start our Gifts of Hope project, where we give every student in R.D. Parker Collegiate a goody bag before winter break. These goody bags will contain some treats, including a homemade sugar cookie and mental health resources. This project depends on outside help, including the Northern Health Region Authority, Jack.org, and Lisa Albe from Culinary Arts in RDPC. SOS's goal is to continuously and diligently like the way to mental health and support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
I have a call.
Great work. You guys are doing great work. Thank you.
It really is amazing the way that you guys come together and the magnitude of the impact that you're able to make in just, uh, the lives of other people. It's to be commended. Good job, you guys.
Excellent work.
Great job. Thank you. Alright, next on our agenda is the Westwood poem.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
The ready to start. So, uh, about a month and a half ago, I had, um, a couple of students come down to my office. Come down to my office and had told me that they had something they wanted to share with me. They had shared with their class and their classmates, and their class was quite impressed, as was their teacher, Mrs. McCartney. And to me, what was even more impressive was that, um, they wrote the poem the evening. It wasn't a class assignment or anything like that. It was just something, um, Navia Papar from Little and Taylor Caribou, yeah, had gotten together one evening and they just started to think about the school, missing the school, and they decided to write a poem together. And then they brought it to school and shared it with some friends. And then we had Dallas.
We, we actually had, we were like doing this Westwood group for like a thing like this.
It was a chat group. That's right. That's right. My mistake. And so Dallas Yates and Zoe Elson also joined in to, to do the presentation. Uh, Zoe wasn't able to be here this evening, she had other commitments, so. And they're going to put a lovely poem for you.
Three, two, one. You were school, but not just anyone. Full of stories and fun. So many memories we still hold close. I'm proud to be a Viking standing tall. But you left us too soon. We laughed, we learned, we grew so much. We loved you, but you had to go. So many memories we still hold close. I'm proud to be a Viking standing tall. But you left us too soon. That's all. Thank you for taking the time to listen to the poem.
Tell them, you guys.
Yes, thank you. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Oh, when she took the bow, she bumped her lip.
Next on our agenda, we have financial statements. Uh, Mr. Michael Gandy, uh, BSC, CA, CPA, MBA, will present the audit results and the financial statements for the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. These documents have been reviewed with the Finance Committee.
Thank you very much. Hard to follow that. Maybe a haiku at the end. Alright, so the purpose, uh, for us to get together today is, uh, to go through the overall report, uh, to the members of the Board of Trustees. We're pleased to present the results of the audit for the financial statements for Mystery Lake School, uh, District, uh, for the year ended, uh, June thirtieth, uh, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, for our audit and therefore the report, you guys have obviously the packages, uh, overall. Uh, they include your financial statements and, uh, the other required disclosures and finalizations. We would like to express our extreme gratitude, uh, to the Finance Division, uh, for their cooperation and for providing the, uh, much added, uh, help and supports needed as we were going through the overall audit. There's a few items we've provided overall. Obviously, the independent auditor's report on the enrollment, uh, for Mystery Lake School Division, the overall audit of the consolidated financial statements, preparation of the financial packages, uh, through the good guidance of the Finance, uh, team. Uh, Bill fifty-seven, uh, requirements and finalizations. And, uh, we also have the school board pension audit finalized. So we'll go through the status of the audit. Uh, we do have to disclose some independence requirements. Uh, we've done that with the trustees already, but, uh, we'll just go through that really quickly. We'll go through the overall financial statements in the dashboard, uh, the overall audit findings overall, uh, and some additional communication and requirements that we're supposed to have. So in terms of the status of the audit, uh, as of the date of the final report, we have substantially completed the audit for, uh, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, the pending items for completion are sign-off and requirements of the approval for the financial statements, the sign-offs for the management representation letters. We've completed our subsequent events, uh, overall also, so that looks at the completion as at June thirtieth to the date of approval, which is, uh, scheduled today for November twenty-sixth to do our overall requirements. Uh, there is one thing finalized, uh, valuation report this year. Uh, the district for their pension obligations and the actuarial valuation around the, uh, uh, employee benefit, uh, requirements. There was a formal valuation done by Element that is being finalized right now. We have the report from Element. We've discussed with Element also, and those, uh, actuarial items are overall finalized. In terms of their overall valuation and draft, they've provided twenty-three point two-six as the overall fair value for the pension, which has increased from twenty-one point oh-eight million, uh, leaving your overall pension obligation, which is provided in a going-concern basis, and that's saying that it's continuing on. Uh, there is a four-point-six million dollar, uh, uh, overall, uh, uh, surplus there. Um, in terms of the financial statements, we've provided the financial statements, uh, to the Finance Group and obviously reviewed at a high level with the, uh, trustees. Um, in terms of independence, we're required to disclose independence. Uh, at the core of the provision of our external audit services is a concept of independence. Canadian auditing standards require us to communicate to the Board of Trustees at least annually all relationships with Baker Tilly, uh, chartered professional accountants and the entities of Mystery Lake, uh, uh, school district. At this time, we would like to disclose we do not have anything that has impaired our overall objectivity in the overall financial statement review process that occurred. In terms of materiality, this is a concept looking at the dollar threshold for what equates to a significant issue overall in the financial statements. Uh, it's set at approximately seven-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars. Our auditing threshold was far lower than that, but we're required to disclose our overall, uh, amount that would cause your financial statements to be materially misstated. So in terms of all the, in terms of all of the audit work that we've done, your financial statements are not materially misstated. We will issue a unqualified opinion, which is the best opinion that you can get. And then the other alternatives would be if there was issues where we could not see one significant item in the financial statements. Let's take cash for an example. If we couldn't get comfort over that, we would issue a qualification. If we noted a few of accounts and we couldn't get comfort over that, we would issue what's known as a disclaimer or an adverse opinion. So the opinion provided on your financial statements is, is the best opinion you can get. The folks are, the folks are keeping a sound, uh, book. We also talked with the trustees about, uh, about, uh, what control measures. There's some really good questions in terms of audit, uh, practice and requirements, so. That was nice to see. Usually folks are, oh, okay, let's get this over with as quick as possible. So, good to see. Uh, this is a overall dashboard, right? It just basically tried, tries to provide overall snapshot of how the school district is performing. So you'll see on the top left corner that there is an annual surplus of two million. So what that's looking at is all your revenue that came in, which is approximately fifty million, less your expenses of forty-eight million approximately. There's a surplus of two million dollars. That doesn't tell you the complete picture. There are other areas and expenses that will occur, some timing issues happen, et cetera. You can see that there's a deficit of point-six-six million. There's no potential of clawback. It's not that those expenses won't, uh, uh, occur in the subsequent year, but this is telling you a point in time. Your overall total assets, so that's including all of your assets on your financial statements, sit at fifty-four point four million. Your asset position is strong overall. Within your financial assets, you have ten million, ten-point-eight million dollars of cash. You have some monies due from government of six-point-two million, and you have investments really. Those are the primary amount of your financial assets. And they're segregated between financial assets and non-financial assets. It's really what you could sell off in a year or have coming due in a year. The non-financial assets you see on the bottom left corner are your capital assets. So that's all your land, building, you know, this building, everything net of your amortization. So you'll see capital assets at thirty-three million, inventory at a hundred thousand dollars, and some prepaid expenses is approximately around eighty-six thousand. You'll see in here your accumulated surplus now stands at fifteen-point-two million, and you have liabilities which are primarily consisting of borrowings that are coming due throughout a duration of, I think it's ten years and a bit, Kelly, and it goes onwards from there. But it's twenty-one-point-four million dollars overall. Your accrued liabilities stand at eight-point-four million, and obviously your employee future benefits are at four-point-three million. I was taking a pause here. Some, some additional aspects that are here in your, uh, uh, report also is just looking at the overall employee, uh, student enrollment and teachers overall. So it's twenty-eight hundred teachers. Uh, I'm sorry, students overall. That did increase from twenty-seven thirty. The majority of those children are in English, uh, uh, centric, uh, classes, and there are dual-track English and French for three-hundred-and-forty-seven students overall. Looking at your teachers, there's a hundred-and-seventy-nine-point-eight-five. So your overall ratio of teachers represented at fifteen-point-seven percent of, uh, per child to, to, to a teacher overall. And your total operating expenses per pupil, per individual child, is sixteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-six, uh, dollars overall. In terms of the revenue that comes in and the expenses, so we can see in here forty-two-point-five-seven million that you're provincially funded. That's your major amount of block of funding coming in. You also have federal government monies coming in at two-hundred-and-forty-thousand, and property taxes, which represent your municipal government monies coming in, are six-point-two million. You also have other revenue, right? Children's, uh, aspects within the school, additional grants, all other is approximately one-point-eight-eight million. So you summate all of those areas in green and it gives you fifty-point-one, approximately fifty-one million dollars that came in for the year. When we look at our expenses of forty-eight point, let's say forty-nine million, the majority of those are spent on teaching services, so salaries and administrative for our teachers overall. We see our student support services at nine-point-eight-four million. Operations and maintenance to run everything correctly stands at five-point-nine-nine million. You have divisional administration at one-point-nine-six million. You have amortization. So we buy a building. The building has five years. Each finger goes into your income statement as an expense for the year. You can't take it all as an expense overall. And your overall financial assets, as we've talked about, are fifty-four-point-three-eight million dollars overall. Uh, in terms of your total capital asset recap, and I'm recapping this as next year, this will become a little bit more, uh, important as we start to factor in the Westwood School. Uh, your overall cost of your assets are sixty-nine-point-five million. Your accumulated amortization on those aspects are thirty-six-point-five million. Uh, your book value, so it's net of, so once you take off, the amortization sits at thirty-two-point-nine million. The key things to, you'll see in there in the amortization column, land and construction in progress are not amortized. Land is not amortized at all, right? Construction in progress, so this asset that is being built up, once we get into the final buildup of it, that's when it moves into your TCA, and that's when it starts to get amortized. So that's why that's shown as, uh, in that base. Overall audit findings, we have discussed with the Finance Group items. We've noticed the financial statements, we don't have significant findings that are needing to be conveyed to the trustees overall. The financial statements are, in our opinion, sound overall. And that's a credit to the Finance Group and also the legacy of processes that are built up over time and the fiduciary responsibilities of the government. All equate to, uh, over a long duration of time, good, sound practices overall. Uh, so during the audit, management does make representations to us. They make representations to us as these financial statements are owned by management. They say number X represents what we believe is correct. We go through and we do audit procedures around that to make an assessment. Is that X a correct X, or should it be a Y? There are also, within these financial statements, significant estimations, uh, provided, uh, in terms of the actuarial valuation, in terms of other pieces within the financial statements. We've gone and looked through those pieces and we are comfortable with the estimates management has provided. We do need to highlight though, management is responsible for determining significant accounting policies. The choice of these different accounting policies and alternatives can have a significant impact on your financial position or your balance sheet. So it's very important to highlight that. The accounting, uh, requirements overall are through your public sector accounting standard requirements. So not a lot of wiggle room here overall that we could note overall. And the only other significant accounting policy that is forthcoming is your revenue thirty-four-hundred accounting, uh, policy requirements, which are, uh, uh, important to highlight overall. Key items overall that will really impact the subsequent year, um, as you guys know, Westwood Elementary School was a total, uh, was, it's a total loss, and that's an accounting term. What it means is the building was completely damaged, uh, and, uh, we've recorded that as a subsequent event overall, meaning that it occurred past year-end. So it doesn't look, show up in your financial statements on an adjustment to your buildings. We basically put it as a subsequent event. And it's provided as more of a qualitative item within your financial statements, and, uh, that's disclosed within the notes of the financial statements. I'll go through the note quickly, and if there's any questions, I'll take a pause also. So on July twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, a fire occurred at Westwood Elementary School resulting in a total loss of the building and its contents. This incident has material implications on the district's financial position and operations. While this occurred after the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, it will be disclosed in the financial statements as a subsequent event indicated a potential impact of various accounts such as insurance claims and asset retirement obligations. So the insurance proceeds are being worked on right now. So the district is in the process of working with its insurance providers to determine the full amount of the insurance proceeds related to the fire damage. As of today, the exact amount of the insurance recovery amounts remains undetermined. The district will determine, will recognize any loss-related recoveries of financial statements once these full amounts are known. Until that time, the potential insurance recovery cannot be reflected in the financial statements as the final amount cannot be reliably estimated. So that's a key, key item to remember. Until we have that final amount, that's when we would start to, uh, uh, go through that exercise. So that'll be a very important aspect in the year ahead. And I did highlight asset retirement obligations. Obviously, there was asbestos in those, uh, uh, in that school, uh, and, uh, there will be a revaluation or, uh, uh, based on the assumptions of asset retirement obligation requirements in the year ahead. So I'll take a pause. Any questions at all? Now you guys have heard this for the second time, so my apologies. We are required to discuss any items that we've noted that, uh, you know, are fraud-related. We didn't note it, any items overall. Did a significant amount of testing on that piece, but just need to convey that. Other requirements, uh just in terms of, we don't have any financial impacts related to the uh uh district. Uh we're fully independent on that uh uh overall requirement and uh. It's basically what we provide is a sign-off packages for the uh district, uh and those have been provided to Kelly, I'll take a pause. And I'll go through any questions uh that might be on mind. Or Kelly, if you had.
Thank you for coming and spending your time. And based on your audit findings, so do you have any recommendation for this board to make any like quality improvement of our financial operation? Or any policies and procedures?
You 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 know, we, like, talking with you guys, the key thing that came to mind, and this is outside of the audit, is really looking at these two uh.
Like you have any recommendation?
Yeah, uh so in terms of the recommendations, really focusing in on, sorry, I keep thinking this is a touchscreen. It's looking at the federal government uh funding coming in. And also looking at this pupil average in terms of what is the best benchmark average, so there's some really fantastic KPIs in here, right? So key performance indicators from an operational, for me, I would really want to see this sixteen thousand three hundred forty-six dollars that we spend for each child. How does that equate to other school divisions throughout Manitoba related to kids with the demographics that we have in Thompson? That one comes to mind, the funding aspects. The overall controls environment within the school board are sound. Uh and we did a lot of additional testing in the year also, it was my first time as the partner on the engagement, I wanted to get additional comfort, so. A lot of the predecessor learning, I had to put aside and kind of go in deep dive myself. And uh this, the team on the finance side has sound controls, it's these operational requirements that come to mind in terms of. Having some additional activities for children within, you know, uh. Uh to go through, but it would be really looking at the overall fund base coming in, uh in terms of the federal funding and also within the child pupil. Uh to see how does that equate to, and involving folks with those type of learning and mindset within ISK, et cetera. To see what they can possibly uncover for that. And I'll, that sixteen thousand dollars uh coming in, I've seen uh different school boards with that number is higher per per child. And those are different demographics overall, but I would want to look through those areas overall. Uh in terms of controls, you know, you can go to controls and build them up where it just becomes so onerous to do anything, right? So I think in terms of the procurement policies, we looked at the controls around approvals, they're sound. So I'm sorry, rambling here, but. But that would be my number one thing if I was looking at it from an operational lens.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have no more business from previous board meeting, onto the superintendent of human resources and policy report.
With a written report, um I just, a human resources initiative that I undertook. I submitted the class size data to the province and posted the average class size in the districts from from K to three and four to eight. So the threshold for the K to three was twenty kids per class and the threshold from four to eight was twenty-four is what they were looking at. Within those averages throughout the district, we do not, as you average all the K to three classes throughout the entire district, we do not have classes that are over twenty. As well as we met that threshold with all the classes uh from grades four to eight. With that being said, there are the odd class within there, so obviously some are over twenty, but some are, you know, say seventeen. So what I was tasked with, if there were classes in K to three that were over twenty. What we were doing, and I had to kind of outline additional supports um that we were utilizing. Just things like additional uh resource support, there was additional educational assistance support. At Westwood, we had a couple of classes in that area that were over twenty-four. But there's a team teaching model going on there. We simply didn't have the space to be able to split the third class and then the third class would have been quite small, so rather we, we have two full classes of kids with. Basically three teachers and the one teacher, team teachers with the other two, just to kind of balance out the workload. Uh we did not have any classes uh in K to eight that were over twenty-four. We did initially at Deerwood earlier in the year, uh as enrollment went up and obviously the kids from U C N. Were redirected to go over to Deerwood uh after the Westwood Fire, because that was generally their catchment area. So we had some, some classes that were a fair size at Deerwood already in the, in that junior high end. And then we got um some new kids with the the U C N catchment area coming or allocated to that catchment area. So we, we did split a grade there, probably it would have been late to, yeah, early October, late September, so that left us under twenty-four. So I had to uh post those results uh on our district website, so that's on there, that was requirement of the province. Uh I attended a professional development session webinar um hosted by M L T Akins, which is a, it's a law firm. Uh the presenters were Sandra Shoners, Shonenski and Devin Worle. The focus of this session was to review Bill, Be, Bill thirty-seven, to ensure that employees are aware. Of what's deemed to be the most significant changes in labor relations since its inception to the province of Manitoba. And some of the key um significant changes I highlighted for you. An introduction of automatic certification of a workplace to unionize when they have filed membership cards establishing more than fifty percent of the workforce. So if you look uh pre-two thousand sixteen, I provided you, it'll kind of, it just kind of gives you a uh a timeline of. Uh how significantly this has changed, so uh pre-two thousand sixteen, if less than forty percent support, uh the application was dismissed. If it was between forty and sixty-five uh percent support, a vote was ordered. And if you had more than sixty-five, automatically certified as a union. So two thousand uh sixteen to twenty-four, it was, if less than forty percent, an application was dismissed. If more than forty percent support um for a union, a vote was ordered. Now, if less than forty percent de- support, the application is dismissed. Uh in between forty and fifty, support, vote is ordered, if it's more than fifty percent, it's an automatic um unionization now. So that was one significant change, the other was using replacement workers in labor dispute is uh highly um prohibited. With very limited exceptions now, and I provided you with the, kind of, for those of you of interest, just what exactly, what exactly those exemptions are. And they're quite stringent. Um I think the one that's most impactful to us as we're going into our next round negotiations with the USW is. Uh the union and the employer must, must meet to determine if any essential services are needed to continue during labor dispute. There are very specific timelines for this process to take place and a formal agreement must be made. These timelines apply to the district, yeah, as I said, these timelines apply to the districts going into, our district going into negotiations. And if you look. I'll give you the. I'll tell you the timelines, I think it's a hundred and eighty days before expiry, a parties must meet. To determine if services must be continued in the event of a labor dispute or a lockout. Ninety days before the expiry date, if the parties determine services must be continued in the event of a strike or a lockout. Um or board order, they must enter into an es- an essential service agreement. So we gotta sit down at the table and kind of discuss this with the USW going into these negotiations and we're getting close, what's. Yeah, so we need to probably look at that, this is new for lots of people that are into uh labor relations right now and and these processes, so. There has been no change with regards to, I mean, uh teachers in Manitoba still don't have the right to strike, that that has not changed. But uh there's also all of those other elements that go on with kids being in a school, i.e. cleanliness and what have you, and so we really need to probably flesh out something there. Okay, um I've had a few retirements. Loretta Boys McMillan has submitted her letter of retirement effective December twentieth, Ms. uh Boys McMillan started working for the district in oh four. Uh for a total of twenty years of service. Ms. Boys McMillan has worked at Deerwood School and Burtwood School and is retiring from position as point five early literacy intervention. And point five early years enhancement teacher at Juniper School. Audrey McLoughlin had submitted her letter of resi- her letter of retirement effective December twentieth, twenty twenty-four, Mrs. McLoughlin. Started working for the district in ninety-six, which gives her a total of twenty-nine years experience with the district, she's worked at Burtwood School. Waponak, which was formerly known as Eastwood, and Juniper Schools during her career, during her career, and is retiring from her position as a resource teacher at Juniper School. On behalf of the Board of Trustees and and the school district and Mr. Lake, I'd like to wish them both a great retirement, so. Are there any questions?
That is the superintendent of education services and programming report.
I provided a report, I'm just gonna highlight a few things. Uh FAS training is going to take place on December ninth for staff. So um right now, I'm just finishing up creating the new PowerPoints for the training. We've included some uh indigenous content in the learning materials and throughout the program. We have um two connectors and our family outreach and I will be pri- providing the training. Um in order to participate in FAS, you have to take the training. Wapnuk and Burtwood are confirmed off for the FAS program for nine weeks starting in January. I believe Burtwood will be running theirs on a Wednesday and Wapnuk will be running theirs on a Thursday. Um updated the uh indigenous academic achievement staffing list. We are going to have a point five pre-language land-based support person. And to help support the programming at Wapnuk Community School. As you're aware, we are only providing the bilingual program from grade one to grade six right now. So we're trying to get in there and do some extra support, just so that students and staff are receiving in the Cree language. Um and also we need to do some work around the land-based program there. Um the position is grant-based, so it doesn't need um approval from the board. So right now, we have seven positions which equate to four full-time equivalents um that are supported through the I A A grant. Off-campus junior high program, we have um right now ten students, but we have more on the um list. We're hoping to get that program up to fifteen students. Um we do meet again on December thirteenth, we did have students making ribbon skirts this past week and shirts with curriculum service staff. On November twenty-first, twenty-second, we are going to have a feast and a smudge um in December to welcome everybody in their um skirts and shirts. Talking with the kids, transportation remains an issue for students, especially now that it's getting cold. We will be using some um S S S L funds to hire a literacy and numeracy, numeracy support person in the new year. Again, staffing continues to be a challenge in the area of literacy and numeracy support as well as educational assistance. Um Jolene has not been able to fully staff in the educational assistance um department. We had a transition meeting this past Thursday with um some of our grade eight teachers, grade nine and our school admin. Some of our topics, we talked about the grade nine luncheon, which was uh well-attended. We're not sure if we're gonna have book club, right now everybody's checking to see what the appetite is for book club for our grade eight, grade nine students. Really hoping that there's students, you know, if there's only ten students, we're still gonna run book club, I think it's really important. Um we have our dates for transition camps, which will happen between June first and thirteenth. Um all our transition camps this year will be at uh Scout's Camp.
We have a meeting?
Yes, we did. It's okay, there was a few people not there, our next one is January twenty-first. I sent it to the um principals, it's okay, we just kind of highlighted what we're going to do. Um next one is January twenty-first, don't worry. There, we're going to look at the promotion dance, we've already, we know that June twenty-fifth is our, our date. Um looking for a team to, to coordinate that. Just wanted to make sure everybody's using the core competencies that have been created for the grade eights. And what we're doing at our next meeting is report cards, grade book and um curriculum services. And somebody from the high school are gonna come in and do a presentation, just because there's some discrepancy on, on some of the marking, right? So that's our next. Um I attended honor roll, yeah, the honor roll and awards night at Artie Parker. There were over a hundred and fifty students receiving awards, so I did bring this. Maybe you might want to see um students, not receive that. Yeah, that's what I've been up to.
Any questions?
We have a question, um just in relation to the transportation being an issue for students. Like, is there any way possible that we could utilize the existing school buses when they're not in use? To transport from like a couple different bus stops in the Eastwood area? Because that is quite a distance for those students to travel.
For sure, it's a distance for the kids to get there, it's a distance for our junior high students that, in the Eastwood area to get to the high school. It's hard for our Juniper kids, our Westwood kids, like, it's um. Yes, and our, our other off-campus too, right, on Fox Bay. Transportation is an issue, so, yeah, um I believe we're gonna have a, a discussion on that. Yeah, and it's, it is something that we need to discuss, for sure, yeah.
Thank you, uh Secretary Treasur's report.
Included in your packages uh for the expenditures for October twenty twenty-four is the check register. Accounts payable of three million two hundred seventy-two thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars sixty-five cents was processed. Included in that accounts payable amount are payroll items of one million five hundred eighty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars twenty-seven cents. Teacher payroll for October amounted to two million two hundred sixty-two thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars seventeen cents. And non-teaching payroll of eight hundred twenty-six thousand eight hundred two dollars and seventy cents. Bring forward the recommendation at this time, the expenditures for October twenty twenty-four. And the amount of six million three hundred sixty-two thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars fifty-two cents be approved.
Trustee Young and second is trustee Nichols Swat, all in favor?
The next item is the year-to-date expenditures. And the financial dashboard, we have now received our final audit, so with our financial dashboard. We begin July first with our opening balance of undesignated surplus, one million six hundred seventy thousand two hundred eight dollars. Uh that is well below the four percent limit allowed for by the province. Uh the province does allow us to hold one point eight five million dollars. Uh we have uh to address food insecurities, breakfast and snack programs. As of November twentieth, we had one hundred sixty-eight thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. And we've spent twenty-one point three percent so far year-to-date, which equals thirty-six thousand seventy-five dollars sixteen cents. The year-to-date expenditures as of November twentieth, twenty twenty-four, uh we're twenty-seven point nine eight percent through the school here. Our year-to-date expenditures equal thirteen million four hundred seventeen thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars, or twenty-six point seven percent. So our expenditures are still tracking, tracking very well at this time. I have nothing else at this time and for.
Any questions for Kelly?
Alright, thank you.
I see that I've got meeting minutes in my package.
Yeah, it is linked there as well.
Okay. Well, it's kind of clustered here. Check register is not there. Uh the check register was circulated to the finance committee as well, but uh I apologize for that.
Alright, moving on to correspondence. Manitoba School Board Association has a call-out for student participation. Deadline is January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Convention awards, the deadline for that is January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Two thousand and twenty-five indigenous education gathering is happening February sixth and seventh, uh two thousand and twenty-five. The E bulletin for November twenty twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four has been circulated in your package. Uh there is a memo, uh government response to municipal uh property tax. Also included in the correspondence is the regional uh meeting minutes for the for fall two thousand and twenty-four. There's forty forty-third legislative bill update and Manitoba Labor Board Essential Services Bulletin. Onto our committee reports, uh Policy Committee. Tomorrow. M D's kind of policy. Very good. That's okay. Thank you. Education and Program Committee.
Uh we have not met since my last report and our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, January twenty-eighth at five P M.
Thank you. Uh Public Relations Committee.
We're meeting tomorrow at five, yeah.
Finance Property Committee.
We met tonight previous to the meeting. Uh we reviewed everything that the Secretary Treasurer has reported. Uh and as reported, everything's tracking well, twenty-seven percent. We are reviewing the indemnity bylaw at DePaulmont. And and we are looking at budget redirecting of trustee travel dollars at this time to be allocated in other areas where it's needed for money's not used. We also reviewed the R D P C and Westwood Insurance Claims. Uh December tenth is our next meeting.
Uh do we have any other committees that have met? Alright, uh trustee comments. Uh trustee Young.
My comments, I attended the high school honor roll awards with Superintendent Henderson and as she said, there was over a hundred and fifty students on that honor roll and if you kind of amalgamate in the grade nines coming in, we can probably safely say that twenty percent of our student body at R D P C is on the honor roll, which I think is pretty substantial number. We've got some pretty intelligent kids out there. So toos to all of them. That was quite impressive.
Great. Trustee Humby.
I just wanna say good luck to all the junior high volleyball teams that will be competing in their volleyball tournament this Friday, Saturday coming up.
Oh, um yeah, I echo um trustee Humby. And yeah, have a safe couple weeks.
I'd like to congratulate our S O S R developer group to hope their outstanding works. And I would like to want our M L A dedicated to bring their contribution, their words to the national level and give us some recognition, the work they're doing in the north and give some representation to the national level. That part we're doing, what we are changing to the community. Great work. We are filled out of them.
Uh I just wanna add um a good job to our finance people here in the school board because of the the good work that we got from Baker Chili on on our audit. They were quite impressed from what I seen on our books, so thank you for making our job easier.
Excellent. And I have nothing to report. Uh do we have any questions from the public? Thank you. Um I guess, uh can we go into in camera at eight o'clock? Thank you. Motion. Trustee Young.